Okay, I call the meeting to order at 6:30. Please rise for the flag this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For this conference, I just wanted to remind the board members now that the Town Hall has higher internet and streaming capabilities that the Association of Towns 2021 Annual Meeting and Training School Agenda is available if you'd like to participate. You're free to come here to participate or else we could do it at home if you have the capability and your fees are part of the budget. So this is a refundable fee for board members to participate. There's a couple really good topics on the agenda that you should be aware of.
So, we just register individually or do you want the registration then?
You can register individually.
Okay.
The registration link, it's long on this, but I'll forward to the email so you can just click it.
Okay.
It's a little too late to put in a voucher to have it paid for ahead of time.
Okay.
But if you pay for it, you can just submit your voucher for reimbursement after the fact.
So what's the date of this?
Oh my goodness, it's not on this. I apologize, it's not on here. I believe it's the 21st in that area. I can forward that email to you if you'd like.
Okay.
This one's new and this regards you and I and Norm. I was contacted yesterday by the University of Albany by a lady named Tess. And what she basically said was, we need to sit down and do a hazard mitigation plan to be eligible for future FEMA funds according to the New York State Plan. So, we have to do a Zoom meeting with them on January 26th at 10:00 a.m. And it would require all three of us and she gave me paperwork ahead of time that we can try to fill out. Norm, you'll have to be a part of it. All of us will have to do the Zoom here at the Town Hall. We don't have to be in the same room. If you'd like to use your cellphones, you're welcome to. If you have the capability on your laptop, I'll hook it up and get everything ready. But this is basically, we just have to do some sort of hazard mitigation plan on the books.
Or...
If we have a future storm like we did on October 31st.
Yeah.
It would basically road detours, contacting people in the area that might be in a potential washout zone, what we're doing with our culverts to prevent flooding, things like that.
Yeah, well, everything we're fixing works.
Exactly. But it just needs to be out of books. I guess it has to be formalized and the University of Albany is helping the townships with this. I'll come having has theirs next week and then we do ours the week after. Unfortunately, it's a requirement we have.
Well, they have a lot of requirements.
I know.
I don't sign it because it's...
So, I'll reach out to both of you and we'll get it all set up where we're able to do the Zoom conference and make sure that everybody's got the capability. And just for informational purposes, the Nightmare Renewal Policy of the Town Stratford, if the board members want to take a look at it and...
Back to the jurisdiction review, should Albany be involved in that too? Is it going to come back on liability if, say, it's a flood zone or it's made of whatever? Should he be in on it as well?
Who?
Our attorney.
No, it's just, it's just a plan that's drawn up by the town of particular roads that might be susceptible to flooding or culverts that need to be cleaned out, potential detours. I'm not really sure that those were the few instances that the lady Tess gave me on what we need to do, but it's a lot bigger and I haven't had a chance to really look over the paperwork. But we would have to sit down and see what we can fill out ahead of time is what they'd like us to do. And then when we sit down, it'll be about two hours of going over everything, seeing what we need to fill in, what is not in our current plan. So, you know, an emergency plan.
I checked to see if that's something in his wheel well or something. I just don't want the liability to be that we say that it's whatever, it's a flood zone or this is something...
We don't have, we don't have the authority to call floods.
Well, that's what I mean. Shouldn't he be involved in it though? Any type of liability that you put on...
I'll sort, you know, I think he just pulled it.
Yeah.
I'll ask him in a second.
Just to be safe, right? Because if all of a sudden a detour happens and then it's on somebody's property or, you know, that covers us, I would think if he's involved with that, depending on if it's a state thing or if it's just like...
It's, it's a township plan that they're just helping us facilitate and fill out. It's all they're doing. And to be honest with you, we already have some sort of plan in place when there are detours. You know, we have the fire department, you know, the highway department knows how to shut down a road, things like that. But I think they just want it more formalized. That's all it is. It's no different than what we're doing now just on paper, making sure that we've crossed every tree and dotted every eye.
And that's what I, I would, well, when he gets here, we can ask him, but I would think that'd be something smart to have it so we make sure we're, you know...
Liability wise, I don't see how the town will be liable for just redirecting traffic.
Well, anything, culverts going out, stuff like that. So, that's...
You came right up to that, Mr. Albany. I was contacted by the University of Albany regarding how we had to do a jurisdiction review for a hazard mitigation plan. I guess this is required in order to be eligible for FEMA funds in the future. And from what I understood from the lady is the highway superintendent, code enforcement officer, and I sit down for about two hours and we go over our current plans for like if we have a road flood and we have a detour, making sure that our culverts are cleaned out or if we don't have it big enough pipe in, things like that. And Councilwoman Burkowski wondered if that's something you should be sitting in for liability purposes.
Or review before they, you know...
Whatever they come up with, I'll...
Okay.
That's, you know, that's a federal government requirement.
It didn't sound like they were looking so much to change anything. They just want to know what each township's policies are regarding certain natural disaster situations.
And obviously it's important that it...
On to the reports.
Heather, before we start that, on the Association of Towns, the meeting, do we have to appoint a delegate even though it's first?
We don't have to appoint a delegate and I believe that I mentioned it last month that somebody wanted to.
Oh, okay.
They have the opportunity to appoint a delegate.
Oh, okay.
That's not... You're up, boys.
Well, for December, we have some potholes, vehicles that were needed on Seco Road, Sealy Road, W A, Gleason and Eager Road. But glimpses as they fall into the road, usually they're small storms. All the sand is needed. Out of our 350 ton lotta salt for the winter, we used 120, or 105 ton last month. So we're hopeful things are, will work out to stay within what we had a lot. For truck goes truck number eight, which is the O7. We're gonna replace the belt joint for air struster and we're gonna replace a router battery cable. Truck nine, which is a 143 lane. We're gonna replace a failed line for the transmission cord and we repaired a rough section on the dump body to keep the side dump working for the winter. We need to look at replacing the dump body on that truck. It is, it is riding pretty bad. Which brings me to the body, truck number eight, which was replaced just a couple years ago. It's in good shape and if we're gonna replace that truck in the near future, we can use that body on that truck number nine. If we're not gonna replace that truck in the near future, definitely a first spot for that truck.
Could you tell me, just real quick, how much you estimate that would be?
The body is gonna be somewhere around 30,000 to 35,000.
Okay, thank you.
But we're gonna have to make up our mind which way we wanna go with that. On the lower that we use regular, we had a couple high ground lines that failed on that and fixed. We didn't use the old loader to load trucks and load it to a simple metal. So that's why we need to keep that one. Weekly FEMA calls continue. Projects that we have on E Road are working their way through the various reviews that they do as well as the Blacktop Project where we fixed the washouts on Anjak Road, Sealy Road and Seco Road. And I'm still working on documentation for Seco Road Bridge Repair and Repair to the seasonal portion of Seco Road. Which I should have done here within the next few days and then go into the end of their review process as well. We do have several projects that we gotta deal with once the, once the weather breaks, but that's another... And I would like to hire another person to fill in the crew so I don't know what we need to do about that.
Well, we already budgeted for it.
I don't know what's in the budget. I don't know if you have to pass something before I can do it or not.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
We could just go ahead and start advertising.
Yeah, I'm gonna, gonna look for people.
And you can write something up so it can be formally advertised for, drop it off with Diana and she'll do the rest of... You can write up something small, I can put it on the Facebook page too.
I will, I will do that. I'll get it for the whole thing so we can advertise and see if we're right.
Thank you.
That's what I do.
Did you happen to get the email I forwarded regarding Fulton County FEMA for the past snowstorm?
Yes, I sent, I sent our calls for that storm and in my calls with FEMA.
Okay.
I mentioned that to him and Gary Brown, who's with the state emergency, Homeland Security, he's kind of the state guy that does the FEMA. He says, well, he says, when, when they get into it, first thing they're gonna lose half of the belt because once they declare an emergency, you only get a plow one lane, you don't have plow two. So that's half of the money. And then he said, do you plow county roads? I says, yep. He says, well, the county roads will get taken out of it also. So we're down to almost have to pay them for the throughout work.
When I received the email, I thought the same thing, to be honest with you, but I keep getting emails from the county asking for, for those plows.
I sent the speed of all, all our calls for, for that storm and I'm sure we're going well placed.
I don't know, I believe so too. But thank you for doing that. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, so Larry, what do you think then? What's your opinion? Should we look into getting a new truck or do you want to replace?
Well, there's the thing, the body that's on the, that holds up the truck is in decent shape, which could go out to that, that other truck. And I mean, you know, you're looking at 30,000, 35,000, that's, we wouldn't have to spend on repairing that other one if we're, we're gonna replace that older truck. The older truck is costing us money every month to keep it running. I mean, I know, I know trucks are expensive and I know we're in a bad spot, but we're gonna throw the good money at the bad.
Could you do me a favor? Could you possibly look up the costs of what it would be to replace?
Yep.
The entire truck? Because we won't have to do the whole plow now too kit, would we? But it would be about the same price as the truck that we just purchased?
I think we could do better than that.
Okay, that would be helpful to have those numbers.
I, I think we can do a lot better than that.
Okay.
I will, I will investigate what, what we can do. But like I say, I don't, I hate to spend $35,000 to put a body on a truck when we have one that's out of truck that we're only gonna keep for maybe another year or two and give her, give her a good parts. I hate those good parts.
And on to that note then, so for a replacement plan that we had talked about possibly doing as far as the plow trucks, when did we take out the bond anticipation for the current? Now is 2018?
2018.
So 2019, 2021. So we're right about to a three year, three year, three year looking into possibly trading, trading up your O7 for a newer one and then on that track.
Right, but that's what, that's what we need to get into, is a replacement plan on this truck because they're, they're, as they age, I mean, that, that truck's 13 year old. We spent...
Their nickel, dentists.
It's killing them.
Yeah. And I don't necessarily disagree, I just wanna make sure that we are actually just moving the four east road because like I said, the cost between half a million dollars the town must put out versus, you said maybe 150,000 dollars.
Yep.
That makes a big difference.
It does.
Because we would have to do a bond anticipation note for, for moving that or reconstructing that road versus moving that.
And I'm, I'm still waiting to get here back from Andy on his calls and his thoughts on that, but I know it'll be less money to move the road. So we're still, still working on that, but...
And on my way, their clothing statement?
Yes, I'm so sorry.
That'll go out this weekend. Okay, so it's, it doesn't have to be approved or it's already...
No, actually, it wasn't the vouchers. No?
Is that something I was supposed to remove?
Usually the employees...
I know, I know there's a thing in the contract to get a allowance, but I don't know if I was supposed to do something.
I don't think they knew either, that's why they asked me to ask and I don't know what you're supposed to do either. So I figured I'd just ask now.
Yeah, if, if the board doesn't want me making a motion to process them this weekend and put them in for next month, it's prepaid? I'd be willing to do that. Yeah, it's open character. So as long, you know, I make a motion to, to prepay the clothing allowance for the highway department and to be submitted into the February prepaid. I'll say, all in favor?
Good.
I...
Calabstain?
Opposed.
Calabstain, I guess. Did you do that right?
You did that right.
What, like I said, is that something they should be asking you? Say if they didn't get their clothing statement, they should be asking you to bring it to the board, not a council person? You understand what I'm saying?
I do.
But I mean, they should be asking you. Should be coming from a council person. I don't think so.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm to Norm.
I got no, I got no print on it. I gotta buy a printer. Is there a cap on what I can spend? I bought one for you for $35 and I just jumped.
How much do you print for Town Hall? How much do you print for Town Hall? Is it just for printing reports? Is it just for printing reports? What do you do with the printer that's town related?
My reports, my pictures that I cut out of my mouth from my school, my certificates, I gotta print them out. If I lose them on the computer, then I got no proof I moved them to school, so...
I know there was an issue hooking up your computer with the main printer.
We tried that.
No, I know and, and I haven't had your laptop since to fix it. If you leave me the laptop, you can use the printer at the Town Hall and then that expenditure is necessary.
Well, if it didn't work, it's fine, but my certificate will be in color. It's a battery color.
Do they need to be in color or are they better in color if those are two?
Well, I, I'm a name.
Why does it have to be in color?
Plus the pictures that I take on the job, if it's not in color, you can't tell when you're taking a picture of it. It's, it's terrible. If it ain't in color, you can't tell what you're reading. I mean, I, I can get a printer for $50, but, but, you know, it's in my budget. It's gotta be...
No, you can get a printer.
I do a lot of my work at home, like I buy, get your printer, a bunch of little things, but, you know, I...
So his contractual line, if I'm following this, we got 1,500 for his contractual line. Had the same amount last year. He spent 653, 84 as of 815, 20.
Your... So if you actually look at the monthly or the yearly...
At our school, we saved over $1,000, but it's all included, that didn't have to dry. You know, it could be the same thing this year, you know, we saved $1,000 on school. So that, I mean, it's just a pain, I haven't heard anyone, I need it right there, I get right here, just to... I'll just do a hand write report again.
Well, I mean, if it's saved in your laptop, can we just print it here?
If, if it's colored now. If it's colored now. So what I would suggest, Norm, is I will look up an economical printer, okay? Don't just run and buy one at Walmart because a lot of them are not economical on the ink, which will increase the cost down the road if you need to replace it.
I'll check out the last one and in fact, the ink actually cost wasn't much though.
Yeah, that's what you have to watch it for.
I got what we're directing, they opened and saved nothing. It took me three hours to print out something and...
No, that's fine. I just wanted to see if it was just a few things you were printing or if there was a lot of them.
It's just, I mean, I do my job, I need to print, I need...
So what I would do is...
I have it right here, every time I gotta print something.
What I would do is I would look up one that's, that's economical on ink. That will cost a lot of money to refill it, you know, okay?
And it's like the old one that I had, it didn't dry up before I used it.
Well, that's why I was asking how much you actually needed one.
It didn't dry before I even get to, you know, put a new cartridge in, I might print 30 or 40 things on it, thing dried.
How many pictures did you print last year? How many pictures did you print last year?
I haven't printed any because the thing hasn't worked and...
How about the other four then, one of them?
Well, mostly on that stuff for, if I were sure that there was a lot of stuff installed.
But you can't give me a number or picture?
Yeah, the other stuff I still got on the computer, so, you know...
Do you file these pictures away into the folders?
Yeah, I'll save.
Okay. Because we can also just do an electronic backup instead of having a physical...
We can just get cheap, I don't care, I do my, if I can just do my report, that's all I ask for. It's just so aggravating, it takes me so long to...
Okay, we'll look into it.
I, I don't know, do you need a motion for this? I mean, I think...
No, it's under our procurement policy as long as it falls under a certain amount.
So I think you should buy a man a printer, but that's just me.
No, no, that's what I said, I just want to look into it because... Sometimes you buy a $50 printer and then it costs $100 to refill the ink. That's not physically responsible. If he's not gonna be using the printer that often, I could still... Into seeing about, you know, even a laser colored printer that the ink doesn't dry.
Yeah, I mean, you could always cap it too. So if it goes over $200 or something, then at that point you have to email it, we'll back it up on a USB drive or something, but I think that's...
And I, we have an Amazon business account that's sales tax free. It would be much cheaper to reorder online than it is to walk into the store. That's what I've been encouraging is if anybody needs a major purchase, just tell me so I can do it that way. Because walking into Hummel's and getting a cartridge or bank could cost you 80 to $100 or I could buy three of them for 50 bucks on Amazon, which is what I've been doing personally, but, no, he'll get a printer, but we just have to look into it and see which one will work best for you. Because no, there isn't a point in buying a printer for you and you only print three pictures and in a year the ink's dried, it was a waste of money. So we have to make sure that it works and it's tailored to, to your needs while being physically responsible.
As long as I get something that works, I can do my job.
So what I'll do is I'll take a look tomorrow and then are you gonna be in on Saturday? Are you in this weekend or no?
What's, I don't know, the date is...
16.
16?
Well, I can do an appointment on that.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Then what I will do is I'll email you, how's that? Or I'll give you a call, alright? Karen, you're up.
Okay, I was having a problem with my phone, I'm sorry, how are you doing, Norm? I have no way to connect at the time and we finally fixed everything, everything's going, going better. I even offered to give up some land and put up a tower on the border front. I said, come on, we need something, but I didn't have really any folks to help or anything.
What I will do is I put out a public notice saying to call your cell phone and I'll correct that. Now today you got, you have your phone lines fixed, everything's working, so I will revert back to your old number, I'll put that in the chat. I knew it was gonna be short term, so I didn't ask my agent to put it up on the website. So I think it was only a matter of days before this was fixed.
Yeah.
So, and if people have occasionally called me and like they can't get in touch with you, so there's always a backup.
Definitely.
So I'm happy that you found that. So it alleviates a lot of your problems. On to the assessors' report. December 11th, he returned phone calls in the field picking up new construction and turning inventory on the database and checking assessments where necessary. He made two address changes. On the 12th of December, no calls received, sorted vital or worthy documents for disposal or retention, entered change of address and continued work on building permits. Phone meeting with the county real property director about grievance times, sales and exemption manuals. On the 21st, he was at home and no calls were respected and he will report if there were, which is done. Excuse me. I'm BTI Director, nothing to report. Justice, his December report is attached, the results he's collected in December. Historian, nothing to report. Diana, do you have anything to report?
There's been a change again in the Fulton County Solid Waste. They are gonna collect computer things that will be open through 2021. So they changed that. I think that's all I have. Oh, I just wanted to mention the taxes are coming in, the permits are going out. So it's, I think it's, it's been very busy. So I think we're doing good there.
January is always very busy.
I don't know, the beginning of the month has been busier than I remember. But my brain fades, so I don't know.
Well, the clerk's quarterly report is in your packet along with December's meeting minutes for the board review.
I just wanted to update the board, most of you know, but Fire Department was installed on January 7th and I canceled our satellite internet via stat on the 9th. This is something I wanted to discuss with the board, I just wanted to make sure everybody was okay with it. I installed the Eero Mesh Wi-Fi system. We were quoted $15 a month to rent the router from Verizon and it wouldn't reach this fault. It just doesn't have that scanner capability to get all the way out here. It would have been much like Diana's where it would have been very spotty and with the technology going in the direction that it was, I felt like we should, we should have more Wi-Fi around the building. That was more consistent. So instead of spending $15 a month for...
So instead of spending fifteen dollars a month for, you know, the life of the system to rent their router, I went ahead and purchased this, and I put it in, it's up and it's functional. There's actually, one of the little ones is right over there in the windowsill by the fire, the flowers in the window. I purchased it for a hundred and seventy-four dollars, I believe. I'd like to see if the board should reimburse me for that, for building contractual, because it is running the building Wi-Fi. It would have been a hundred and eighty dollars for the first year to rent the router from Verizon. If this is not something the board feels they should approve, that's fine, I'll keep it here as a loan. But I thought it was a better system. We can tailor it a little bit better to the needs of the community, for the guest network, and things that the Verizon router wasn't capable of doing. This also goes in with the nine-year policy about cybersecurity, that was also an issue. The Verizon router, you couldn't tailor it as much as you could one of these devices, so... But I'm not going to submit that voucher.
But don't you usually ask before you purchase?
I'm not trying to be a... No, no, that's, I purchased it because I felt that we could use it. I'm asking the board to reimburse me, but I'm not expecting the board to reimburse me. This was more our last donation while I'm here, to make sure that everybody has a competent Wi-Fi, and we have security in this. If the board wants to own it, if the board thinks that the town tracker should own this device, that's perfectly fine, I found it on sale. There's actually three of them around the building. And then it'll be town-owned. At the moment, I'm owning it, because we need something.
Want the incumbent or the procurement?
Yes, it's under the procurement policy, but I did go ahead and I did purchase it, but I felt we needed something in this building, and I didn't want to do the Verizon action. It just, it seemed like a waste of money. It didn't have the capabilities we needed, it was a waste of money in my mind to spend that kind of, a hundred and eighty dollars for the first year. You don't even own it. You're just renting it. And I felt we could do better. But I'm happy to take it out, bring it home, put it in my house, and put in one of my spare routers, and I'll give that to the town for free. It just won't reach out here. Wi-Fi is very difficult around corners and in buildings, such as this, so... I guess this kind of rolls into, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, John. It rolls into my next thing I wanted to ask, was the guest Wi-Fi policy. There's a lot of local families who still don't have fiber internet, they're homeschooling their kids, and with the guest Wi-Fi, it's not a security threat to the rest of our devices on the network. And I feel as if the taxpayers are paying this bill for us to have Wi-Fi, that we should be able to make it open for people who need to use it, to do damage. We're not limited anymore. We can use as much internet as we want, and this device would also allow for that. And I can structure it a little bit better, so I could put in content filtering, things like that, where people aren't plugged into our parking lot and pulling up things they probably shouldn't. They could keep them, so it was a more bigger picture. And I'm happy to have it here, I have no problems keeping it here. And if you guys think that there's a better option or a cheaper option, you're welcome to look into it. I just, as the unofficial IT type of the town, and I, you know, I'm constantly fixing or tinkering, we needed a better option than what Verizon was giving us, and I tried to fill that. That's all I was trying to do. If you don't want to, it still stays.
So what's the reimbursement amount, Heather?
I believe...
One seventy-seven?
Yeah, it was like a one seventy...
Okay.
One seventy-four.
So where else is bad, that's cheaper than...
Yeah, to purchase Verizon's router would have been cheaper.
So do you need to motion now?
Nope.
I'll say that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The guest Wi-Fi policy, I did want to touch base with the lawyer. Although I can do on my side the content filtering and certain restrictions for people accessing the guest Wi-Fi, and still, it'll have a password. Is there anything else we need to think of liability-wise for maybe letting the public utilize our network?
Just let the insurance company know.
I'm sorry, I'm...
Just let the insurance company know.
Okay.
We're aware.
That being said, is the board amenable to allowing the guest network for people to use in the parking lot? They need to pull in and access internet?
Yeah, why not? Yeah, I've been doing that for years.
I know, and that's what I'm thinking about, is that we need to do better, and if the taxpayers are paying for this service in the hall, they should have some access to it.
Well, and for the poor kids too, that, yeah, they still have trouble, they're non-law in doing their studies.
I know, it's, you know, I wish I could just invite them into the hall and let them do it here, but unfortunately we can't. But the next best thing is if they have the option to pull in and maybe access and download things that they need for schoolwork, that it's available to them. The only thing I will do is that I'll put out a notice if the board doesn't mind. The password to the guest Wi-Fi can only be given by the town clerk, I'm not gonna post it publicly. I'd like to do that, but I'm afraid we're gonna have to park them up for people, which doesn't help, because then everybody's internet goes down. So if people are interested, I think it's just, they can get the password from Diana.
Yeah, if they're really interested, I feel they'll come down.
Yeah.
They can also seriously come down and do their work or whatever they need for.
So that'll be the question. Onto the financial report. I only have one resolution to begin with the year, so it's kind of cool. Just the acceptance of the last FEMA check that we received in December, on December ninth, pertaining to the October thirty-first, 2019 storm. The Stratter Town Hall hereby accepts the following check amount from New York State and FEMA pertaining to damages that have been repaired thus far from the storm on December ninth. We received twelve thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-one cents. A total year-to-date received from New York State and FEMA is forty thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and one cent. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, thank you to Larry.
Yes. I'm ready to figure it out.
The only other thing I have for financial is the monthly budget report, and this is just what we have from January 2020 to December 2020. We've only had, I believe, three prepaid things in January. I didn't think it would facilitate a whole inch report. This can give you a better idea, but we still have additive year spots that will be coming out of this report, so that these numbers are going to change once I process the end-of-the-year vouchers. But this should give you a good understanding, or at least closer to a good understanding of last year's fiscal year. Does anybody have any questions? I'd like to make a motion to be the end-of-the-year vouchers and January 2021 vouchers. Second. Any questions on the vouchers? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Karen? Public speaking is closed tonight, for obvious reasons, we're shut down to the public. Is there any old business anybody would like to discuss?
Yeah, how's it coming with our new lights? The...
The LEDs?
Yeah.
They're not gonna change the buttons when they pop?
Okay then.
So as Tiffany responded, maybe we should take a little break. At least they're all lit up.
They're gonna change the bulbs and turn them on until they pop, they're gonna run it tonight.
Get your gun, Alex.
I was gonna say, get your BB gun.
Yeah. Unfortunately, at least they're all lit up. You know, for a few years of not having them working, at least right this day now, so I'll take that word.
No, don't try to change it either. If the town's afraid of it, they try to change. You wouldn't believe, that was one of the bigger reasons we had.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the town pays for it. You know, there were lights that, you know, it was before the supervisor's house. So there's a street light up from there, you know, and there were ones that the town administration were recommending at interceptions, you know, the light-up interceptions, so people could see. But, you know, they went through and did it in for all the street lights in the town. And, you know, they had a significant savings on, you know, shutting down ones that, you know, somebody came here and complained, and their friend or the supervisor or their cousin, you know, they said, "Okay, put a light."
I think we only have seventeen or eighteen.
No, the town is afraid, they had like five hundred and... No, it was a big expense for the town. And now they're going to LED, which should be a savings as well. You just did it in Gloverville, a lot of the street lights in Gloverville, you notice, have changed.
I think about half of our lights are LED at this point, so we just have to buy their time and wait for the old bulbs, and then they'll start converting them over. I fought a good fight on that, but they're pretty... This is no cost to the town.
Yeah, I know.
So if we wanted to get them all done now, we'd have to pay for it.
No, I know.
You know, we might as well buy our lights.
It's definitely a benefit to the town to have them replaced, because I think if you lower the cost, you don't really have to be that proud. You're always lucky enough.
Any new business?
Okay, then don't forget, Saturday, we still meet at noon?
Yes. Saturday, we meet at noon to do the audit of the justice and the town hall and the supervisor box. Anything else? I make a motion to adjourn meeting at seven thirteen. I'm going to motion to adjourn meeting at seven thirteen. I'll say that. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.